Mackey, roll call please. Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kante Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Ms. Capio. Next, we have our communications that are reflected on the personnel and operations agenda. And now, we will go into comments from the public on resolutions and all other matters.
Good, okay, thank you. Jill Hall, 509 Whitewood Road. I apologize, last week at the work session, it was really difficult. There was a lag time and some disruption. But I was trying to address some concerns that I have about summer school. I'm very happy to see it back on the schedule for summer 2024. But it is going to be limited because of budgetary constraints. And I have some real concerns about what that's going to do with regard to equitable access to summer school for all of our kids. One section of some of the courses that will be offered is not going to be sufficient to provide for the students that are needing credit recovery. So had some suggestions. We've been giving summer school for free forever. Did some research, we're the only ones around that give it away for free. Other districts do charge their students to enroll in summer school. Students who need to take summer school and do not find it available at Union High School have to pay $300 to $350 per course on New Jersey Virtual High School or to take it at one of the private schools. My other concern is that families have no skin in the game when they don't have to pay. And so what we find happening very frequently is that kids will sign up, taking spots away from other students. And then after three or four days, they don't show up. It is too late for the kids on the waiting list to come on because of seat time requirements. And we are unfortunately not being able to provide the best services for our kids. And so I'm really asking for us to take a deeper look at this. It was great if we could have offered it for free when we had the money to do so, but we don't. And I think there are some advantages, even if it is somehow on a sliding fee scale or some type of a non-refundable registration deposit. Because my real concern is kids that are not going to take summer school seriously are going to take spots away from kids who have worked really hard all year and just didn't make it at the end. And they didn't know that they're failing for the year until after they failed that final exam. And they're going to have spots taken from kids who knew third marking period that they weren't going to make it and signed up very quickly. I'd also like to put forward that we need to take a look at the attendance there. I'd like to build in some extra opportunities for kids to build in seat time. Last year, we had kids that were exited from the program that had satisfied all requirements, but one in particular that comes to mind had two days of court and was out one day and was told, well, he shouldn't have been out that one day because then the court dates wouldn't matter. And he did not get his credits for geometry or English. And he is not going to be able to graduate on time unless he takes two courses on his own that he has to pay the $300 for. And there were some other kids as well. So I would also propose adding two days on to the end so that we can help some of our kids, because that's what we're about. We're supposed to be providing services for them. That we could maybe have the kids come in who might have been absent for whatever reason to make up their time as well. So lots of things to think about. I know that it's, the clock is ticking and summer school is going to be here really soon. And I don't know if it's too late in the game to do anything about it, but I'm just asking for your consideration. Thank you.
Melissa Tolovich, 60 Oakwood Village in Flanders. I'm the school librarian at Battle Hill. Previously, I worked in both Battle Hill and Hannah Caldwell. You may or may not know, but our school library funding was reduced to zero for this year. Fortunately, we got grants to purchase some books. Unfortunately, these grants did not cover the majority of our library needs. Grants are typically for a specific type of book, so we were unable to purchase books to fulfill student requests, to support changing curriculum, to update nonfiction titles, and to support individual school and collection needs. Additionally, without a supplies budget, some schools lacked even the basic materials to process these books. These grants also did not cover subscription access to electronic resources that better prepare students to interact in a digital world and make them college and career ready. Research shows that students read more, understand more, and are more likely to continue reading when they have the opportunity to choose what they read. For many students, our libraries at school are the only place that allow them to self-select books. Yet, students often ask for books that are not available in our collections. Lack of up-to-date books is the fastest way to lessen the love for reading that our students develop in our school libraries. If you take a look at the chart under 2022-2023 school year budget, you'll see elementary library funding varied greatly from about $2 per student to about $10 per student. Middle school funding was about $9 to $11 per student, and the high school only received about $5 per student. Almost all of these fall short of the national average, which is about $11 per student in the K-8 schools and about $15 per student in the high schools. Funding our school libraries will help our students succeed now and in the future. In a summary of school library impact studies, over 20 studies found a positive association between increased library budgets and student achievement. One study shows that test scores increased by 5% to 12% in both reading and writing in schools that spent more on their libraries. School libraries also support important social-emotional skills such as empathy. Currently, our library collections do not fully represent our student populations. Studies have shown evidence that reading fiction increases empathy. So we need books that represent our students and help our students to see diverse experiences and perspectives. Finally, libraries are hubs for information literacy. School libraries need the tools to teach our students how to get knowledge from the flood of available information. We're requesting per-student funding for our school libraries. Based on the national average provided by the School Library Journal, we suggest rounding up to $11 per student in the K-8 schools and about $15 per student at the high school. On the back of the hand or the second page, you'll can see a chart with a sample breakdown by school building. Thank you for your time and your dedication to our students.
Thank you.
Good evening. Anne Margaret Shannon, 2591 Spruce Street, UTA president. And I just want to thank the media specialists and librarians for standing up for the kids. I hope that you guys are able to help them with that budget item. I did have one question. I hope I know the answer. The money that goes through to the Patrick School, is that something we get from the state, though? It's not really our budget, right? Right?
Correct.
All A and 12B, it's just money that funnels through? Yes, thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public? This would be a great moment for more comments from the public. So while we're waiting for the superintendent's report to be up, I would like to say hello to our liaison from the Township Committee, Mr. Bowser. Thank you so much for coming in today. Everybody in the audience, say thank you to him also. Talk to him, bite his ear off, let him know everything that we need. He might be able to help us. Thank you so much, Mr. Bowser. Yes, great. Yes. Thank you.
We have some special guests before I get into mine, and then our one liaison could share a little bit later tonight. First up, we're going to hear, where are we? From our special ed audit, Gary Molnar, come on up. Gary, I guess probably the middle of last year started an audit over special services. And he's come to just share some of the findings from when he spent a lot of time with us diving into special education. So I'm going to put your PowerPoint up.
Okay, great.
And then we'll go from there.
Okay. Oh, okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Brenacuista. Madam President, members of the board, thank you for having me here tonight. I know I was scheduled to come two different times in January, and I appreciate your patience because I had conflicts with my schedule. So thank you for taking your time tonight. I'm Gary Molinar, I'm the Assistant Superintendent at the Ed Services Commission of New Jersey. We are a public school district. We're a sister district to your Union County Ed Services and Morris Union Joint Commission. It will, just that top one, perfect. We are a public school, so we provide many services to area school districts. One of those services being special ed department review or audit, if you will. And that's what we did for Union Township Public Schools last, starting last March, I believe. So we start, well, March, April. And here are the various items that we looked at with Kim and her special education department team. Record reviews, placement data, LRE data, special class programs. We did some observations in your schools as well as interviews and parent surveys. So let's get into some of the information. So seven class programs. We observed seven special education class programs. It was Jefferson, Washington, Livingston, Hannah Caldwell, Burnett Middle School, and Union High School. Seven classes, both self-contained, pull-out, in-class resource, and pull-out resource. Classroom observations were followed by interviews of your teachers, your special education faculty, as well as your building administrators. Some of the things that we came away with looking at your classes, your teachers seemed very well-prepared to provide instruction as per the students' IEPs. Individualized instruction, excellent use of instructional technology throughout these seven classes that we observed. Teachers used best practices throughout. So they were helping students to generalize, they were tapping into previous learned items, and they were helping those students make connections. Also, your inclusion opportunities for your special education students was noted throughout your programs, especially a mention was made of the coffee shop at your middle school. I was not invited to have a cup of coffee, but maybe next time when I come back. Other things, your unified clubs and unified sports. Those are really great opportunities to include your students with disabilities. That's a wonderful thing. Also, your professional development in your multi-sensory reading programs, Orton-Gillingham especially, is really picking up especially in the lower grade levels. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that with recommendations. Professional development opportunities are made available to your faculty. And the climate and culture was noted to be very positive, especially for students with disabilities and being included in their school communities. Your building administrators spoke well to that as well. Some of the other information we got through the interviews, again, the need to continue to include your special education students. There was some concern expressed about a reduction in the number of special ed supervisors that you had at the district and that impact on instructional delivery in your buildings, in your schools. And inclusive education seems to be very valued and not just spoken to, it seems to be a feel. And parents also indicated that they felt their children were being included. Some of your principals felt that due to lack of administrative support, that they have a difficult time getting out to the classes, I think as much as they would like to, to assist especially general education students who are working with your classified students. Staffing concerns in general. This is not unlike anything we're hearing anywhere we go. So staffing writ large was a concern. Also, you have one to maybe two behaviorists for the district. So there's a lag time for a behaviorist who goes in, observes what's going on in the class, has to go back, write a behavior plan, and then has to turnkey it somehow back to the classroom teacher to say, hey, this is what you do. By that, that could be two or three weeks down the road. By that time, that behavior may have escalated to a point where what they first saw will no longer address what was happening. And this isn't just a special education thing, this is a gen ed thing as well. So behavior, that lag time is critical, where it should not be a lag time, actually. So, and gen ed teachers, the feeling was they could use more assistance in how to accommodate and modify and differentiate their instruction for students. Trying to move quickly because I know you have a packed agenda. A child study team. So we met with all of your child study team members. We didn't do it individually, we did it as groups. If we did it individually, we'd still be meeting. You have a lot of child study team, and they had really great constructive information for us. So they really feel that Union Township offers a vast and wide majority or continuum of services and helps students to do so in the least restrictive environment, which is what we're called to do by code. Transition planning, they were very happy with and like to see that grow and continue, especially for post-secondary opportunities for your students with disabilities. They did feel, and again, this is most child study team members that we meet with throughout the state, that the general professional development that is provided for or from the district for them isn't really specific to them. I know the Department of Special Services seeks to provide that training in their monthly meetings. However, the vast majority of district-wide training isn't necessarily pertaining to a school psychologist or an LDTC. Very concerned about mental health supports for students throughout the district and access to those mental health supports. And trying to bridge gaps that they do see between gen ed and special education programs. Project Unify was spoken to by many of the child study team members. They felt that they get complete support from their department administrators as well as most building administrators, which is good to hear because we don't typically hear that. Child study team felt, again, professional development for gen ed teachers, for modifications, accommodations, and behavior management strategies. That is, that's a big one. Child study team feels that counseling, again, needs to be more accessible and should be consistent across the buildings. In speaking to your special service administrators, just a feeling that your faculty are implementing goals and objectives as written, which is what they're called to do. The CST, again, going above and beyond to help. Most of the building administrators, we didn't get into who, felt that special education was accepted and was part of their school community. Let's see. Again, a continuum of special class programs available throughout your district. And when we get to some of the recommendations, I know space becomes an issue. However, we'll talk to it a little bit more. I realize INRS is not a special education program or function, it's a gen ed function. However, if INRS and NJTSS are not functioning, it directly impacts special education and perhaps leads to a higher referral rate to special education. So really need to, I know it's a long process to get everyone trained up in implementing INRS with fidelity and to do so consistently. Gen ed teachers, again, would benefit from multi-sensory reading strategies, not just the special education teachers, and continue to build capacity of all faculty to serve our students and to do so, again, in LRE, in a gen ed class rather than pull-out programs. Here is just some other programs that your special ed administrators are already implementing throughout the district. Looking at post-secondary, the NJTIPS program, that's a travel training program out of Rutgers. It's a really great program, and it really benefits your students to be able to travel independently because that becomes critical if they're going to succeed and work post-graduation. Dare to Dream is another part of that. And then the Making Action Plans is part of that person-centered planning that is already in place. Just want to mention a procedures manual. It sounds dull, it sounds routine, however, that's really quite important for child study team, especially if you have novice CST members, and that is already underway here in Union. Record review, this is not, heck, I do this part of it because that was my background as a child study team person. I don't get to do the fun part of this, which is classroom observations. However, we did review 46 CST records. Here's a distribution by grade, so we caught all of the grade bands. Here's a distribution by meeting type. So you'll notice annual review, of course, is the most because pretty much a reeval turns into an annual review, an amendment is a type of annual review, and the initial also turns into an annual review. So that was the distribution by meeting type. And here's the distribution by category. So you will notice that SLD-specific learning disability, other health impair, other lie and share, and that's typical of a distribution. So we think we, I wouldn't call, it's not a complete random sampling of records, but maybe a stratified random sampling, if you want to call it something like that. But we do try to hit all areas. Just some things, some commendations for record review. Planning meetings were held within 20 days, which is per code, and that's very important. Annual reviews are completed, CST completed thorough reports and evaluations. LRE statements tend to be, were very well-written. We don't always see that, and they tend to be boilerplate, so that tells me that your team is individualizing what they're doing and how they're looking at each student. 100% of the reevals were completed within three years as per code. And all files had a sign-in sheet. That seems simple, but that's really quite important, especially when confidentiality of student records is always to be considered. Compliance notes, and these are very minimum. So evaluation reports need to be mailed to a parent 10 days prior to the meeting. We can only determine that in several of the cases. So we usually determine that by, there's a letter with a date and says, here's the meeting date and attached police fine. So that's a quick clerical fix. Meeting signatures were not always consistent, but I think that has to do also with the nature of our meetings now. Some are virtual, some are hybrid, some are in-person. So it's finding that way to always document that and always, annual reviews within one year. So of the 37 that we saw, we couldn't, 37 were within one year out of the 46. But again, this is a very small sample. We only reviewed 46 records. But again, usually there's an explanation as to why that happened. Even if a parent delayed and canceled the meeting, that's still not reviewed within one year, and that is, it kind of sort of doesn't count. Anyway, PLAF, that's the present levels of academic achievement, functional performance. PLAF statements should be data-based. It shouldn't be, hey, Gary's a really nice person to have in class, and we enjoy him, and he has a great smile. While that may be true, it should be objective data. What is the student's strengths and where do they need assistance? Goals and objectives need to be that smart, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound, and we were seeing that for the most part. Here are just some recommendations for professional development for CST members as to how to write a better IEP. To speak to your board attorney, a defensible IEP. So, and a defensible IEP is a good IEP, it's a good program. So these are just some of the items that can be considered, and I know Kim and her team have addressed many of these in the past. And we'll need to do so over and over. Special ed document review, it's another function. We pull your data off your school report card and the state performance report, your meeting, your mentoring and targeted review items as per NJDOE. You have a system in place currently. Your special ed department has a system in place to track the implementation of placement, of enrollments, of workflow, and to ensure that reports and the data is completed in a timely manner. That's not easily done, especially coming out of the pandemic because, again, of the way in which the meetings have been taking place over the last several years. Just some numbers, right now, you're running at 18, I think it was 18.08% classified. The state rate is 17%, so again, you're kind of right in there. However, there has been an increase over the past two years of the number of classified students, but you've also seen enrollment come up at about that, maybe a little less. This was interesting, that the CST have seen increased referrals over the past three years. So they've increased pretty significantly. So again, that speaks to really doubling down on NJTSS and INRS processes in your schools. Again, to preclude students to getting to the referral phase to the child study team. Again, meeting LRE requirements as mandated by the Department of Ed. So that's really good stuff. High parental referral rates. So we saw a pretty significant, I think last year it was 50% of the referrals were from parents. That's higher than typical. And again, we don't know if this is coming out of pandemic, if this was as a result of learning loss during pandemic, or if it's really truly an underlying disability for the students. So that's something to really consider and to look at. And again, we get back to implementing those New Jersey-tiered system of the supports, those Tier 2 and Tier 3 strategies as a way to address those issues. And again, to make sure we do that with fidelity, to be able to determine if it's a student with disability or there's other factors at play. Parent survey. All right, so it was very low response rates, and you can interpret that, I guess, many different ways. It meant most parents are satisfied and just really didn't have either the time or their interest to reply. It was emailed out, it was just a, you know, Google form, pretty straightforward. Just some things, parents felt that their ideas and their input is considered. Parents have an understanding of their IEP. They know procedural safeguards and parental rights in special ed. It's important that your parents know that. Parents also said they know who to reach out to should they have a question. That's not always the case in a district your size, that's saying quite a bit. Special education students, according to the parents, feel that their students are accepted in their school communities. Just some things to look at with the, again, I know it was very low response rate, the 24-hour response rule following, you know, a parental inquiry. We noticed that some parents felt that that was happening. However, in looking at the numbers, too, there were many parents who were neutral on this or said NA. So I don't know, perhaps the question wasn't framed the correct way. However, the 24-hour rule is always, is the golden rule as far as getting back to parents, really anyone, for that matter. Some ideas for ongoing training and workshops for parents. I know you have a fairly robust CPAG group that does present this type of information. One other thing I would say, though, but are students who are in school, what, five to six hours a day, 180 days a year? So the vast majority of the instruction, if it's going to be generalized, needs to take place at home. And so how to implement those ABA programs, those instructional or behavioral programs, we really need to provide our parents with supports on that. Sibling support, too, I think is very important, and it's never too early to talk about transition to post-21 options because that happens really, really quickly. What is Union doing well? You're doing a lot of things well. I think the unified clubs and sports are really, really important. It's a great way to involve your special education students. You have a large continuum of placement options throughout the district. And again, you have a CPAG that meets and is presented with information. So that, many districts struggle with the CPAG piece, that doesn't seem to be the case here. Some recommendations, just different trainings that we have here. We saw evidence of student communication apps. We saw evidence of student communication apps in, I believe, your autism program. These are some quick apps that are inexpensive. And like Prolo Quo, Prolo Quote Go, that is an app that's placed on the student's iPad. I think the app is about two hundred dollars, and iPad is about three hundred dollars, maybe ten years ago. Instead of a five-hundred-dollar communication device, it would have been a five-thousand-dollar communication device. So these apps are really, really important and help our students to access instruction. Accommodation differentiation, best practices, differentiation of instruction as a best practice for your gen ed. And again, continuing to look at multi-sensory reading programs, your OG program that you're implementing currently. Just, I just want to skip down to gen ed professional development. Because that's where we want the instruction to be happening, to the greatest extent possible, in that general education classroom. And so here are just some topics that can help our general education teachers to best address the needs of your students with disabilities. Just the basics of special ed and the process and the procedure. I know it can be dull, I happen to enjoy it, but it can be dull, especially for our gen ed teachers. But it gives them an idea of what it means when you refer a child to the child study team. And maybe answer the question, what's so special about special ed? So just some ideas on professional development. Retention, recruitment and retention. It's tough, it's really difficult right now. LDTCs and BCBAs seem to be, well, LDTCs, the state isn't making them anymore. I don't know what's going to happen with that. But BCBAs are very difficult to come by and/or hold on to. Also, maybe consider reintroducing the third supervisor for your special ed department. Continuing to grow your life skills program. And continuing to enhance your work-based learning and job-related skills programs within that life skills program. Again, the behaviorists, I can't stress enough, I'm struggling with that in my district. So I feel a little hypocritical standing here saying, you need to recruit and retain behaviorists. And I'm having a difficult time doing that myself. But we know the importance of it. Let's see. I know I'm reading a lot of things to you. Just again, the New Jersey-tiered system of support and looking at Tier Two and Tier Three services. And look to move, always to move students to least restrictive environment. And your team spoke about how they do that. And we do that, again, by collecting data. And that whole data piece becomes very important. Just staffing concerns, I don't want to hit that again, you're painfully aware of it, I'm sure. Principals, they see the INRS process as a paper-driven process. There are different ways to digitize that process and to make that data more accessible and actionable. Any way to increase preschool inclusive opportunities, it would be wonderful. But again, that comes down to space and staff. And this may be a way to look at some savings. And I know your business administrator and I have spoken about that. But looking at paraprofessionals, and oftentimes, we, paraprofessionals are not the answer to the inclusion of students in gen ed settings. And that's not always the way. And there could be ways to reduce the number of paraprofessionals. Again, that has to do with data collection and how that student is functioning perhaps more independently. Just documentation, community-based instruction, and last, again, tiered systems of support. I really rushed through that, and I apologize, but I'm here and I can take any. Kim may have some answers for you as well.
I guess I had a question when I initially went through like the thicker version of this.
Yes.
And I'm not sure if you're going to be able to necessarily answer it now. But just kind of that seed that you can leave with Ms. Conti. One of the things that I saw was just, from building to building, what INRS looked like was very different from building to building. How do you make it, how do we start the process of making it consistent across the board? Of course, what you want is to always start at the INRS process. And hopefully, you know, if everything goes well, it stays there. Of course, you have, you know, where it has to go. But I think that one of the things that I saw in this is that, that just the big difference in INRS, where it should start. And then, who was the sample size for the eleven-hundred-and-forty-five parents? I didn't get one, I would think that I would be.
Random.
Central office that was sent out.
Yeah.
The survey was provided there and it was to go to students with IEPs. I did not.
Oh, just randomly?
I just did not.
Yeah, yeah.
I had no because of the review. I was separate of it. But we did give that up to.
To parents of IEPs, IEP babies, got you, got you. So that's my thing, how do we consistently make the INR process in every building within the district similar, right? The same is one thing, but similar, so that we can all have that, all parents and children that have the need, experience it alike.
It's a great deal of professional development and working together as an INRS team. And of course, what impacts that is turnover in building staff. So, because it is a team process. However, I think it starts with that building administrator and that, or that administrative team within each school, that they have to hold sacred that INRS time. And that process needs to take place, and it's not just a holding pen. So if, what impacts that too, though, is the ability of classroom faculty to leave the class, to come to an INRS meeting if you don't have a substitute to put in that class. It's a really tough problem, but if it's done right, over time, and it's not a quick fix, but over time, I think you'll see that it does make a big difference. And it does help those kids who just need a little extra support here in the gen ed side, rather than going through a whole child study team evaluation. And perhaps not to find that they're eligible for special ed-related services, now we're right back to the beginning. So it's a lengthy process. I know at a former district, we trained the entire district over the summer. We spent several days each INRS team. And it worked for a while then. But it's always something that you have to come back to and hit every year.
And even evidence-based interventions, there has to be evidence-based, research-based interventions to address different areas of student functioning, from academic to behavior. All those pieces have to be there, so that when the process, the PD is rolled out, the forms that take the information are all there, and you have the keys and the process, you have the tools to provide the interventions that are research-based effective, you're taking data on. And it's a great process, because even when you get later on into the different tiers, special ed students and general ed students can take advantage of your instruction as well. And it will help your resources to be more effective too.
Thank you so much, Ms. Conti. Ms. Conti, how many students with IEPs do we have in the district?
Don't hold me to an exact number, the last I did check, we were within referral over fourteen hundred. We have gone up in numbers, I'll get you an exact number.
No, about.
But I know when I first started, we were maybe in the thousands, then we went to eleven hundred, and now we're, you know, we really have.
So, Mr. Molinar?
Molinar.
Molinar, I apologize. You reviewed forty-six IEPs. Is that a significant sample size to make these determinations?
It's a very low sample size. That's why, you know, when I say systemic or compliance, I don't know how systemic.
So these could almost be seen as generalizations, to some extent?
To some extent, yes, sure.
I have another question. You also, out of the surveys that you sent out, sixty-seven parents responded.
Right.
Out of those, would you say that that's a healthy representation of the total parent population for the students with IEPs?
No, if it, that was a fourteen percent response rate. No, I would say you would look for a minimum of at least thirty percent.
But out of those, forty-four percent expressed dissatisfaction with the level of communication and relationship with the district?
No, it was just, I forget the exact question, but the question, it's in the report. I don't have, well, I do have it, but I'm not sure what page it's on. It was, do you find that the district special services administration is responsive to you?
And forty-four percent said?
Forty-four percent, since you're asking.
Said no, right.
Do we have a minute to flip to this? Yeah, it says timely response from.
Actual dissatisfaction, the disagree and strongly disagree was very minimal. The largest pieces of the pie chart are those.
Right.
Some odd parents who responded to that question. They had, there was, I forget how many percent agreed and felt they were responded to. But they were, but what was the biggest portion of the pie was people who were neutral in their response or NA. Which tells me, either they didn't have any reason to.
Where they didn't reach out, right.
Or neutral because they didn't, so looking at that, if you look at the pie chart on Slide nine, that will show you pretty.
And on that.
And I get that, but in here, and you referenced the twenty-four-hour communication rule.
As a recommendation.
As a recommendation. And you do cite that forty-four percent of parents who feel like there's not that reciprocal communication, or those lines of communications could be improved.
Absolutely, I think there's always room to improve communication, especially with our parents.
I apologize, I have a couple of more questions.
Sure.
Slide nineteen, it says evidence of evaluation reports being mailed to parents included in only two of the nine records.
Correct.
But you reviewed forty-six, am I missing something?
Well, that's because not every file review had a record or a report that was mailed to parents.
So out of those forty-six, there were nine and.
Right, so there were how many reevals? We looked at ten reevals and six initials. So that's where we would have seen reports that would have been mailed to a parent.
Got it. And although not statistically significant, in the second bullet there, it says that it's missed, out of those documents that you've reviewed, seven out of the forty-six were missing signatures, that's approximately fifteen percent.
A signature page, yes.
Yeah, so.
At the back of the document.
So when I did the math on that, that's about fifteen percent. Is, are we going to review that fifteen percent out of our fourteen-hundred documents are not missing the signature page as part of our, these recommendations?
I believe you already have in place where your district administrators review on a regular basis.
And looking for that as well too. Remember with COVID as well, when that came through, a lot of times, lots of signature pages were online. It was a big shift from them being in the files. So we're being very much more proactive, we're trying to make sure everything gets from the computer into the file. Also too, with paperless, right? Everybody has the idea of keeping it on the computer as well and not putting it into the file. But we're working on that to get that into the file. And I also, so yeah, so I did actually, with Molinar and I, we spoke about that as well. So I think it had a lot to do with COVID. I did see a big shift with the signature pages, meaning anything that was signed electronically. With the IEP direct frontlines, the system that we have that processes the IEP. They came up with you could sign electronically. And as, you know, and now our meetings, our structure, our meetings have changed very much from in-person to virtual. Home parents, you know, with work schedules, do enjoy the virtual. So a lot of those signature sheets, I was wondering when they were pulled, you know, and didn't make it from the computers to there. So we don't.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You might ask my question.
No, extra question, I'd rather wait till the both.
Okay, no, so I'm gonna go with Ms. Conti helped with this, gave you information for this.
Well, we interviewed.
You collaborated, right?
I'm sorry?
Did you collaborate for this?
Collaborate?
Like, like work together? Like, my question is, I'm surprised that I didn't hear.
No, I wrote the report with my team.
Yes.
And then I shared that report with your central office and with Ms. Conti and her department.
Okay, so my, when you talked about the schools that you included in this, I was shocked not to hear Battle Hill.
We did not select the schools.
That's my question.
We did not select the schools.
So where did that come from? Was that you, was it a hat?
We didn't select the schools nor the classes to be observed.
Who selected them?
Your observer called us.
Okay.
And there were only, there were seven.
There were seven school, classrooms to be observed.
That we got to select.
Right.
But we were trying to be representative, right? Because I wanted them to see, say, the North East program. I wanted them to see a general ed program. Also wanted to see them at secondary, elementary, and to get that representative pulled out of seven.
I, like I said.
And who was available at the time when we made, when they were coming in to observe.
I can understand, I was just shocked that when the list of schools were said, Battle Hill was not somewhere in that mix. But I defer to you, Ms. Conti.
Thank you. So first, Mr. Muller, thank you for coming in and compiling this data, the report. I think it's definitely needed to gain clarity and understanding and insight to what works, what doesn't work, and where we can assist to make special ed much more stronger. I can say that nationwide, there is a staffing issue in terms of special education teachers, LDTs, CSTs, behaviorists. So some of the stuff that you put here understandably will be here because of the staffing constraints. I just have a couple of questions. Madam President alluded to like my first one, which was, who determined the criteria of what schools that you would see? So we know that you just come in and you review, and our district says, hey, these are these classrooms. Mrs. Conti, I know that you're gonna, you say, you know, I need this place, this place, this place, to give a generalized overview. But what makes up the determination of what is seen and what is not seen? And an interesting question is, most of us consider Battle Hill the baseline for our children with disabilities, inclusive with general ed population. Why wouldn't that be one of the schools that we visit? Because that's a higher vantage point of seeing what our special education process looks like, number one. What was the determination in the number of data and sample data that was taken? Was that our district coming to you, Mr. Muller, and saying, here, we have forty-seven referrals or packets or cases that we want you to go through to determine? Like, what I'm missing is the determination of how we, I understand the data, right? But if I look at the data, it's a little skewed, in my honest opinion. But I need to understand, we have such a large district. And the goal of this is so that we know how to move forward with special education and conclusive of it. So that's question one. Question two goes to general ed. The consistency that I see in this report is the disconnect between general education and special education. And one of the things I can tell you in my relationship with the district is that sometimes we're not all on the same page. And what happens with us with kids with disabilities, we're pulled in different directions. So from this, I see the disconnect with general education. I see the disconnect with counseling service and the disconnect with special services. You bring up a good point in mental health, that's our counseling disservice. And these are conversations that we've had for years in terms of those two areas really do need to come. Because sometimes children are misdiagnosed, et cetera, et cetera. Or they overlap. And then you throw in general education, and now you have a parent and a child lost in the shuffle. What were some of your findings with that, with the mental health component? Because you do indicate it here.
We do.
We had the social emotional learning, we had the pandemic, we're out of the pandemic, and we're seeing the ramifications of what happened. And then last, you talk about staffing.
You're really counting on me to remember all this.
I know, don't worry, I'll help you. And then CPAG, I want to say kudos that, you know, I do feel that Union is that unique village when it comes to special education. And so I really want to say kudos to all of our team members, all of our staff. And looking at this report, seeing the limits that we have and the increase of referrals and that nature. It's easy for us to all get caught up in that, but not remember to give kudos to our staff. who make it happen with the limited restraints, constriction, and especially with the nationwide shortage of educators being behaviorists. So that leads me to, and this is more like Dr. Ben Aquister and Mrs. Conti, where is our supervisor to really work on that? And so, general ed is one of the biggest areas because that's where the basis of our issues really do happen on that level. Now, I hope you remember all of this, you know.
Number one, I worked with your former superintendent on the scope of the review.
Okay.
And if we were going to review additional records, that's additional time and additional cost.
Okay.
So one of the entering arguments was, given the cost of such a review, how to keep those costs down?
And that was with Dr. Taylor?
That was with Dr. Taylor, yes. And one of the things.
So budget was like.
I'm sorry?
That, that, so that, Dr. Taylor was the one you determined and.
I worked with, I, I submitted proposals to Dr. Taylor. And we had three or four different options, all at different price points, if you will.
Got it.
Record reviews take a great deal of time.
Absolutely.
And it's not just looking at one IEP, it's looking at the entire student record. And if it's a high school student, and you may have seen, the records can be this thick, so going.
I have one.
Okay, well, then you know exactly what I'm talking about. So, so record review is very time consuming. Also, a classroom observation, we allocate three hours for per classroom observation. That's usually about forty-five minutes for the observation, another thirty to forty minutes for the consultant to meet with the teacher. And then time for that consultant to write that report.
Got it.
So even at three hours per class, that's, we're, we're still typically above that. So in trying to keep costs down for this review, and I forget what the exact number was for this review, that's how we determined what we were going to look at.
Got it.
As far as which records were picked, Ms. Conti and her department sent to us a list of students by number, not by name, but by also grade level and category. And then we tried to sample.
Okay.
So that, to ensure we got a nice distribution by grade, by meeting type, and by category.
Got it.
So that's how we determined which forty-six records. We ended up reviewing about fifty because sometimes we just didn't get the information we needed. So that's how.
And just so unclear, fifty was the agreed amount?
No, forty-six.
Forty-six was the agreed amount, but you had fifty.
I'm sure we had at least fifty pulled.
Okay.
Um, as far as interviews, we decided that we were only going to interview your special ed teachers, who we observed classes, and those building administrators.
Okay.
And we did, though, and I think it's very important to get to every CST member, and we did. And we also had speech therapists and occupational therapists involved with those interviews. And they lasted for several days, all at, what, Hamilton, right, is, is the school? So that's how the interview piece went. And as far as surveys, we just surveyed special ed parents, and we didn't push that survey out because we don't have every parent's email. We created the survey and then gave it back to your district to send out to parents.
Okay.
So that's number one, I think. Number two was the access and, or consistent access to mental health, or was that true?
So the connection is oftentimes, we have a counseling services department and we have special education.
Right.
And children get lost in between the two, and it becomes the shuffle, right?
Okay.
Because depending on the behavior, it could be from a counseling perspective, or it could be from a special education perspective.
Yes.
And based on what I saw here, that seems to still be one of the struggles we have as a district. What was the feedback and findings that you had with that? Because you do mention that we do need to do better.
The feedback was mostly from your child's study team.
Okay.
About their feeling of that their students are still lacking access to consistent counseling. Maybe not as a related service, but counseling like on an as-needed kind of basis.
Now, is that within the district or additional counseling service?
No, here, within, within the district. But also, they're feeling that if there were adequate access to counseling for gen ed students that could perhaps address issues, again, either through INRS, because they can look at behavior, not just instruction. But how to look at that and to address those needs prior to it rising to the level of a CST referral. So that's how your team was feeling. Also, if we're, one of the things that I know, it's in the report, but when you pull a child's study team member, a school psychologist, or a school social worker to a crisis, perhaps their suicidal ideation, or homicidal ideat- whatever the case may be, they can get pulled for half to the entire day trying to help determine the level of crisis and should this student go out for additional services. So that, that was a concern, too, because when they get pulled, now they're not holding their IEP meeting, now they're not finishing the eval on time, now they're not being able to get into classes and to help support teachers as well. So that was, I think, kind of part and parcel of the whole mental health.
Definitely more conversation to continue with this. Um, and then the last part was the general ed component and the disconnect. So based on the feedback, you got that from pretty much every.
We got that from every, it was mostly your building administrators and again, your CST. Because they're, they're in the rooms, they're in the schools, and they, they see. And I, this isn't a union thing. I, I think this is, as you move up to middle school and high school ages, many teachers are, I, I teach down the middle, and that's what I do. And that happens everywhere. That's not just a township of a union thing. And, and, and that's hard to hear, right, as special educators, when we're trying to ensure that all students are being served in an equitable manner in that gen ed class, where, where we try to do that instruction to the greatest extent possible.
Okay, I do wish that you would have had the opportunity to witness Battle Hill. You know, I.
To witness.
To, to have surveyed, to have the team really experience Battle Hill because it is our, our hub. I mean, going back years, that's not your decision to make. But, um, you know, thank you for this. I think I'm done.
Did I get all of them?
You did.
All right.
It opened up to more questions, but you definitely did, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President, may I?
Absolutely.
Oh, Kim wanted to go.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I just had two really interesting things.
Okay.
One is, do you know, out of the parents that responded to the survey, how many of them were parents of children with a disability? Because I thought that parents with children with a disability are a lot less engaged. So I was just wondering how many of them have.
I'd have to, I'd have to look at, yeah, I'd have to look at the data and get back to you on that.
And then the other one was, what about that baby referral? How many apps were out of district places?
I, I don't know that I could say, out of all of these referrals, how many were then found eligible for special education-related services, and then how many were recommended for an out-of-district placement? We, we didn't get the feeling that out-of-district is, is such an issue here because you do have so many placement options within your district. But that's, that would be an interesting one to continue to look at for your special ed department. You know, to follow referrals from beginning to logical conclusion where, where it ends. Yeah, welcome. But I'll, I'll see if I can tease out the, the parent data, yes?
So following up with Ms. Williams' question and regarding out-of-district placement, that was one of my questions, was how many students are we sending out of district? I would like to know from Ms. Conti, not tonight, but hopefully soon, how many students we are pushing out of district or sending out of district, or the parents are requesting out-of-district placement? Just because I know that is high, the cost is extremely high. And then I would also like to know how many pre-k through third grade students are we referring out of district at this current time, within the last school year? Also, I heard you speak to, when you surveyed and went into the districts to do this particular audit, I was alarmed to hear that we didn't talk to our paraprofessionals. The ones who are working in the classroom side by side with our instructors. Because a lot of times, parents in the community can say that their parents support the students, right? The students often have better relationships in time with the parent because of the one-on-one interaction the teacher is teaching, right? And the parent is over here trying to keep this child aligned and, 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 you know, to be able to teach the class, right? So the relationship really is more sometimes with the parent. I'm not saying that the teacher doesn't have it, but the parent. So when you're doing these type of things, why would you not talk to the little man on the ground who's in the trenches that's really holding down that classroom? I'm really concerned about that. Um, in your report, I'm also alarmed that we didn't discuss any monetary side or impacts to all of this that we provide for special education. Special education takes up a large percentage of our budget. I think when we're talking about an audit, you're bringing it to the board, we're in budget season. We are beholden to our constituents in the community. So when we're asked a question that relates to monetary impact, we should be able to verbally express, this is where it is, it's this service here that's costing us three million dollars. So I'm alarmed that this report, while it has a lot of data here, I'm surprised it has no monetary attachment to it and what it looks like for our district.
Right.
And how we can curtail some of these expenses by either bringing services back in-house through some of this. I mean, we are currently working on it. And then I had, I was a little bit dismayed also to see that we're talking about bringing in another supervisor. I thought that, I was like, wait, another supervisor? I'm just saying, that's a, that's a conversation for another time.
If, if I may, just, this is a special ed department review, a program review, not a budget review. So audit is perhaps.
Programs equals money.
I, I completely understand that, but we, we, part of our review was not to look at the budget.
Right, so wasn't, not you that I'm really questioning about what, what you put in here is, it really should have been questioned to the superintendent because when we asked for this, we asked for that as well.
Okay.
So what he gave you and what actually happened is two different things. I'm just saying that there's a lot of data here, and it would have been really nice to have the monetary side of what that really looks like and how it impacts our district, that's what I'm really saying.
Sure. And, and as far as speaking to paras, that's a good point, and we, we've really never done that before. We've surveyed paras in other school districts, we've never interviewed paras, per se. And again, that becomes a, a time, a time issue. But to your point, I think a survey of paras would be, would be important, something to consider going forward.
I know that that would cost much more money in terms of the fee that you would charge the district, but in this day and age, the one-to-one paras, the classroom paras, play one of the most critical roles in the social, emotional, and academic development of those children.
I hear you.
And they have better knowledge, and with all due respect, Ms. Conti, than probably you because they are day in and day out with those children. I would say that not speaking with them and getting their perspective miss a great part of what you are illustrating here.
I understand. Again, it was not part of, of this.
No, and once again, our frustration is not with you, please understand.
And I'd like to add, Mr. Muller, I'm not sure if you knew, Ms. Kim Scott Hayden is very humble. She was para of the year. Yeah, ESP of the year, yes. And I just might say that, um, might say, I'm sorry? Oh. Of the nation, look at that. Thank you, thank you. And I, I'm just, that, a lot of times when I've, I think everybody sitting here knows that I have an IEP baby, and for many years have sat at tables with IEP. And the most important part, to me, anyway, of my IEP team is my para. And like I've told Ms. Conti, if my para is not there, I'm not there. And if I'm not there, no one is there. That's what I wanted to say, and that was a great point, Ms. Kimberly Scott Hayden.
I just wanted to just clarify one thing, just so we're all clear. This was not, this was established with the previous superintendent, and the previous superintendent is the one who made the determination of how we would proceed with this report, if it would contain financial or monetary funds. And this is just something that you're presenting now that he's no longer here. Because with all the questionings, it's important that we're clear across the community that this, this didn't start with Dr. Ben Aquister. This came from the era of Dr. Taylor, and subsequently now, we received a report under you with a million questions because I do agree that there should have been a budgetary component to this report because in order to make these recommendations, we need to know what we're talking about in dollars. And we need to look at our programs to thoroughly assess what we can and cannot do. So I just don't want that to get lost in the discussion of tonight.
I completely understand, just so you know, it was never our intent, nor did we say that we would, we would provide any type of budgetary impact to any of our recommendations.
No, and I know that, Mr. Muller, it just seems like there was a disconnect in terms of how it was presented. Either way, we have these recommendations, but without the financial component, it makes it hard to really look at this. Without seeing Battle Hill, makes it complicated to kind of really look at it. But, to be fair, you nailed it on a lot of things that we could do better, and also issues that we have within the district, and as well as noting what we do well in terms of special education. So for that part, thank you. Dr. Ben Aquister and Mrs. Conti has a ton of work to do with the community at large in general to this. But I just didn't want that to get lost, that this happened and we move forward to make it better moving forward, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mullinar, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things you said in your presentation and get your perspective on one of the, one of the conclusions you reached or one of the data points. You indicated that the parents' survey was a fourteen percent response, and I heard you say something about thirty percent?
We usually get around thirty percent in, in a parent.
But in your opinion, even at that percentage rate of response, would you feel confident making inferences and decisions based on that level of, of response?
I would always make recommendations, even at a thirty percent response rate, but by indicating the caveat that this is a thirty-seven response rate, like I did here where I indicated that it was only a fourteen percent response rate. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's really hard to draw generalizations or inferences or conclusions from such a low rate. However, it was part of the review, so I think it needs to be reported out.
Right, yes, thank you for that. If I, Mike, could I just make a brief comment? I, I think we should be very cautious about making decisions or inferences based upon something that's really not statistically valid enough. In my experience, you want to see a seventy or eighty percent response rate of a sample in order to say that that represents that sample. The responses that we got represent those fourteen percent, and that's it. And, you know, if it's a self, self-selected response, people that have different motivations are going to be responding and giving their answers, which may not represent the, the entire parent population.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to the fact that you're all of you, but I also want to say thank you to the special education staff and general.
Absolutely.
To the entire, out of the Union Public School and Staff and that make it work every day. That despite this personnel shortage and how much, you know, we have personnel going in and out and really, you know, making a difference every day.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Mullinar, thank you, Ms. Conti. So next up, we have our fiscal auditors. I'm gonna have Ms. Kuhn, who has, her department works very closely, especially for the last few months.
Yes.
With Suppley Clooney and.
Good evening. The state of New Jersey requires that all school districts on an annual basis be audited by an independent auditor. Our auditors are Suppley Clooney. His team camps out at our department for roughly three or so, maybe even four months, pulling data and requesting several reports. Today, we have the head lead accountant on that team to report out annually our fiscal twenty-three and his findings regarding last year's fiscal. Mr. Eric Zimmerman and the partner with Suppley Clooney could not make it tonight, Mr. Warren Correche. So Eric, with that said.
Thank you, Juana. Thanks for having me again. I'm Eric Zimmerman, and I was the manager on the account for the audit of the Township of Union Board of Ed. A little bit of good news, we're kind of getting back into a more regular audit period, right? We've had a lot of delays since COVID and numbers from reports that we need to put into your financial statements that are in front of you tonight that have caused delays in us issuing those reports in the past few years. Even last year, we were, we were doing this presentation at the end of March, okay? So we're, we're getting there. And these numbers that we need are starting to be released a little bit earlier each year now. I'm, I'm kind of hopeful that going forward, including next year, you know, we're gonna be back towards, you know, November. you know, November, December, hopefully January type thing. Uh, so we're moving in the right direction in, in that regards. I apologize for having, for being the, the second audit presentation of the night. That, that's rough for you all. But what, what our job is to, or what we're engaged to do is to issue an opinion on your financial statements, uh, whether they're free from material misstatement and in compliance with the rules and regulations of the state of New Jersey. So I'm pleased to announce that, you know, your financial statements, we're issuing an unmodified opinion. Um, that's a clean opinion, it's the best opinion that you can get. And basically what that means is that your financial statements can be relied upon by the various users that may need them. We're, we're issuing you two reports, okay? So the thicker report that we have, that you have in front of you is the ACFA report. It's the annual comprehensive financial report. And in that report, that basically has all of your financial statements in there and subsidiary schedules that go along with that for the fiscal year. I want to draw your attention to probably the most important schedule that's, that's in that report, the Exhibit C1. It starts on page 90. And basically what this is, it, it tells you your budgetary revenues and expenditures for the year. And at the very end of this report, it tells you where you ended up, okay? So what was your final fund balance for the year? That said, you know, I think it's important to point out, you know, what we look for as far as a, a conservative approach to budgeting and long-term sustainability of a district and financial, you know, we're, we're looking at finances all the time, is to, uh, generate back what you're using in your budget each year. And what I say when you're using in your budget each year, you're, you're allowed to balance your budget, your, your budget appropriation side with revenues, tax levy, uh, state aid surplus, okay? So the surplus is what I'm talking about. And when you don't regenerate back what you're using in surplus in your budget each year, your, your surplus, your total surplus, your total fund balance is now going down. And that was a situation that we saw when we came in to do the audit for fiscal year 23. Again, I know this is, we're, we're approaching March here of 2024. Uh, just to, to note that these financial statements are as of June 30th, 2023. We're already almost out of the, the next fiscal year. So all the more important to, you know, how I started the conversation that it'd be really good to get back onto our regular schedule where we're having these meetings earlier or towards the end of the year before the holiday season. Last but not least, the other report that we have is the, the smaller of the two. It's the Auditor's Management Report. And the state of New Jersey requires us, when we do our audit, to look at various departments and components of, uh, internal control and compliance. And these areas are, uh, payroll, ASSA, um, cafeteria, purchasing, things like that. And if we find issues in those areas, we're required to make a recommendation and comment on them here. We do have one recommendation in the report that is listed here, and it's required to be read out loud. So that recommendation, 2023 001, is that the district should keep an accurate analysis of the balance on deposit in the payroll agency account, okay? The, more specifically with this recommendation, the, the agency account that you have in the district, it was being reconciled, but that money belongs somewhere. And we need an accurate analysis of what makes up that balance to be done on a, on a regular basis. Uh, that's the finding that's in the report. There's a corrective action plan that has to be, to file that up, to be approved when you go ahead and accept the audit. And, you know, hopefully that's, that's ready for, for tonight, so you can accept the audit and be done with this and, and move on from, you know, from, from that. So that's what I have as far as the audit is concerned. I mean, if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to, to answer them.
Madam Vice President?
I just want to say thank you. And you being second, this was, to me, um, so important that we, not only us as a board heard this presentation, but also the community at large. Um, as you mentioned, we will have to start working on the budget pretty soon. And everyone in our community has things that they hold dear and people that they hold dear in priorities. And our job is to balance that out with also being fiscally responsible. So please understand that sometimes we have to make certain decisions and, and vote on certain things um, because of the fact that we also have to be aware of our limitations with our budget. Um, so thank you so much. I know it's not good news, but it is real news. And, um, we should all be on the same page with that.
The only thing that I wanted to say is that sometimes having these realistic conversations is hard, um, year to year. But what I feel is that our board is now stable. And as we hand down year to year, uh, uh, different change in leadership, I am confident that we will, and, and our, and our district leadership, um, that Mr. S. I know that we are going to have these difficult conversations so that we can stay on budget, on task, and realistically know what we're going to spend. So that we are giving back to our surplus. And, um, and moving forward, come out of this corrective action plan and, uh, and lead Union forward. Thank you so much, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
And before we get started, there was a question before about I N R S. We're, have a presentation for you next month that we're probably, we just finished our second session as a group, district-wide, to make it consistent throughout our district. Because I know, so I'll have Dr. Perez, um, just update, uh, the board and the community on where we're at with that process. So as we know, monthly, um, I picked one person to recognize, uh, this month with, I knowing, knowing we had two presentations. I wanted to be quick, we can probably pick 10 a, a meeting. We have a lot of wonderful things going on, but I would like to invite Ms. Royster up. Uh, she oversees our cosmetology at Union High School. So, um, you know, again, I could say a lot about what Ms. Royster does. Again, we're looking for people making an impact beyond the, the daily hours of that classroom. And Ms. Royster goes above and beyond. Some of her students are here, correct? That are even supporting her tonight, you guys, if you want, come up. But she can, she, she's not just their teacher, she's a mentor. Uh, with, within the vocational setting, a lot of times, that needs to happen. And Ms. Royster, again, getting the students ready to pass their state, for their state license. You need, you need someone you can rely on, a mentor. Um, she continues to provide Union High School students with real-life experiences. You're going to get to see some in the pictures that we're going to show you. Um, you know, and, uh, Ms. Royster is, uh, shows us a transformative power of mastering a craft. And today, the students could walk out, join an, an established, um, business, or, or even venture to start their own. Uh, we have so many people that I just run into that graduated from Union High School over the years, that you go to a salon and there they are. There's so many people that went through our cosmetology program and now are successful. And they have all the levels, you know, I don't know all the terminology, but there's different levels in hair cutting, right? So, and these people are at level five or whatever the top one is. Um, we have, I, I've seen our students as they were younger, started level one and worked their way up and, and, and making their living. And some of them own their own prac, their own businesses, are very successful. So, um, she's helping them master their craft and nurturing them. Uh, the confidence is so important, especially, you know, when you're, when you're out there then on your own. Um, so, so really, you know, she goes above and beyond, helps our students with creativity, self-expression, self-assurance. Um, and I'm just excited to be able to honor you in this small, uh, fashion of all you do. And the biggest thing is at the end, and I'll let you share that a little bit, uh, about the licenses that the students get. And why now that, what, what you have them go through allows them to leave with the licenses? Um, you know, the, the program is under the leadership and Mr. Ragoe is here, is of Mr. Ragoe, as well as Ms. Bossard being the principal of the high school. We need a lot of support, especially to keep our vocational programs going. Uh, this is one that I think is so important for our students to continue to offer over the years. And, and with, um, us all supporting, uh, cause like some of the other programs, we'll keep it successful. Uh, if you want to just share a little bit, and then, Madam President, Madam Vice President, if you want to come up, we'll just take a picture, uh, while you're sharing, I'm just going to go through some.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
And then why don't you also just talk about the license and then about the upcoming event that's going on that we just got board approved?
Absolutely. Good evening, board. Um, thank you so much for having us here tonight, we are truly honored. Um, I am actually a graduate of Union High School Cosmetology Program, uh, 31 years ago. And this is home, this is home. I'm still a Union resident, been a lifelong Union resident. Um, and I just feel it's, it's a blessing to be able to come here every day and pour into these students. Um, the program is a two-year program. The students take in their junior year as well as their senior year. And it's definitely growing, um, like right now, we are recruiting for the sophomore, the current sophomore class to come in their junior year, and we have 66 registrants. So, um, you know, the program is definitely growing. Um, after they finish their two years, um, they will sit for their cosmetology state board exam, which allows them to become a hairstylist, makeup artist, wax specialist, skincare specialist, or nail tech. Um, with the, with that license, they can go anywhere. Um, there are so many different avenues that they can go down. Um, they can be, you know, a, a hairdresser for Broadway. They could work in TV and film. They could work behind a chair. They can, uh, become a scientist. I have one student, uh, one past student who actually works for L'Oréal, and she comes, she's a chemist now. And she comes up with all the hair color products and things of that nature. So there's nothing that these students can't do. Um, I support them 100,000%. Um, it's a lot of work, a lot of times people think that it's just, you know, doing hair, nails, makeup. But there is an academic portion to this. This is just one of our books. And they say, Ms. T, we got to take this home tonight? Absolutely, you do, okay? They go through anatomy and physiology, they go through skincare, um, the structure of the skin, the structure of the hair, diseases and disorders of everything. So there's a lot of information that they need to know. And then another thing is that they have to practice, um, for, for 500 hours on real people. So developing their, their confidence is so very important. One of the things that we do is, um, we have Senior Thursdays where we partner with the, uh, the, uh, Senior Citizens Program within Union. And it's so nice to see the older generation and the younger generation be able to kind of bridge that gap. It teaches them soft skills to be, you know, just a little bit more, um, demure around, you know, our, our elders. Um, it teaches them a lot. They also do things such as, um, providing manicures for the teachers. We just had a professional development where the students were able to provide manicures for the teachers. We had about, what, 40, 50 teachers come? And they're able to connect with their teachers on a different level, you know? Um, soon we are going to do what's called Queen for a Day. And what that is, is, um, women who are coming out of or transitioning from domestic abuse situations. Um, we are going to provide makeovers for them, and we're super excited about that. Um, just allowing them to re-enter the workplace and re-enter society and feel good about themselves. Um, this, I always tell them, this, this career is nothing that AI can take over. AI can never take over getting your hair cut and doing your nails and things of that nature. So they will always, always, always have the ability to work. Um, I still encourage them to go to college if that's what they, you know, want to do. But there's nothing wrong with having that license in their back pocket. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm just super excited about everything that we have going on and everything that we will continue to do under the direction of Mr. Ragoe, as well as with the support of Mrs., uh, Dr. Benacosta and you all, so I thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And I have to say, when I was at the senior center, they were requesting your services coming out. So it, it, it is great. Um, the seniors, more than ever, I think, the center's thriving and, and they're looking for our students to come over. And this is just another avenue that's happening, so.
Dr. Benacosta, if I just might say a few words, uh, myself. Uh, when Dr. Benacosta told me about this, um, idea he had about every, uh, month recognizing somebody, I never would have thought, um, it, it would have been you first, I believe, right? Is this a first? Last, last one, we did the, um, the, the, yeah. Uh, just because I, and I, I say it personally, because a lot of people up here know her. I have an eighth grader that is dying to come to you. And she, and FYI, dad wants her to go to Catholic school because he thinks Union isn't it. And I said, I'm sitting here, Union is it, and my baby's coming straight to you. Thank you so much.
Can we just come for a picture? Come over here. Yeah, Ron, come up. Thank you again. So as, as we continue, um, when we talk about Small Glimpse, the reason I say Small Glimpse because a lot of this stuff is happening, and unfortunately, we're not hearing about a, a lot of the stuff going on. So I try to focus in on, on some small things happening. But it's together, it's so much positive stuff going on in our district. Um, we've talked about it from the board, the township, uh, Union Township Public Schools Mental and Emotional Support Resource Guide. It was, uh, completed, it's going to be up on our website. I will make sure everyone, uh, has a copy of it. It's not just going to be there and stay there, it's going to grow. So as we add more resources, anyone that has any, I, I, you know, I accept the feedback. If we miss something that you know is working, that's a, a resource for families, uh, we'll add it to it. So it's going to just be a fluid, growing document, but thank you, that's through collaboration of us together. Um, Jefferson Elementary School, Girls Who Code. Um, I'll highlight a couple of things about it. Number one, it's, it's being funded through our title program, Title I program. Um, and under the direction of Ms. Nunes, we have 27 girls who meet weekly to explore coding. Going back a couple of years, uh, we, we were trying to get two or three students involved in coding, uh, girls. So here we have at Jefferson School, 27 that are interested that we meet weekly. And I'm sure, Ms. Nunes, that's going to be growing. I'm sure over the years, you'll get it up to probably 50 or as many as you could fit in that classroom. So thank you for that. Um, they, they also, uh, are working on Dash Robots. Um, and the activities are aligned to, uh, coding concepts, and students learn the basics of robotics and problem-solving skills. So that's awesome. Um, fifth grade recreation basketball program, it is run by the UTA. Ms. Shannon's here, I know, is this the second or third year? Okay, so third year, girls' basketball is thriving. Uh, Ms. Shannon started it a couple of years ago with the UTA, supporting it, um, with T-shirts and getting coaches and stuff like that. But, uh, there's some great shots of our, uh, girls' basketball, uh, program. Again, collaboration, uh, amongst, uh, our associations. It really does help us support our students. Connecticut Farms, Student Council Raised Funds For The Homeless By Taping A Teacher To The Wall. And I know the picture's small, but the teacher is, the feet are not on the ground. They did taper it to the wall, which is awesome. And the Student Council Raised Funds For Homeless By Taping The Teacher To The Wall. Ms. Cartwright Spent Three And A Half Hours Tape To The Gym Wall As The Students Brought Tape Up To Raise Money. And the advisors are Ms. Katz and Ms. Cartwright. So that's an awesome, uh, fun activity to raise money, uh, for the homeless. Um, I know we mentioned before, but, uh, it, it's official again. Um, Jocelyn and Nisa, who couldn't be here tonight, members of ROTC, uh, both accepted Such An Honor Into West Point. Many schools don't get one child or student in, we've gotten two. We've gotten two. Um, and it's obviously a prestigious four-year academic physical, mental education that results in a Bachelor of Science degree. So, congratulation. A couple months ago, we spoke about Angelina Carney and how she had that opportunity to now, um, go, uh, on Carnegie Hall and play with some amazing artists. That happened. Um, so, I just wanted to highlight, she made her debut, their debut at Carnegie Hall, and, um, even though I wasn't there, I heard some wonderful things, uh, about it. Uh, we had three, uh, wrestlers, um, that are, will be wrestling this weekend in the regionals. Um, those that don't know wrestling, it's not easy as a wrestler. You have to become top three in the, uh, districts to make it to the regions. Top three in the regions go to the states. Uh, this is what they work for all year. Uh, so, congrats to them. Uh, good luck this weekend. Um, and they did mix up the districts this year, the NJCAA, which made it a little, we were in a harder, little tougher district, um, and we still had three, three wrestlers make it out. And the regions are here. We ha- uh, uh, host the regions. Our region, I think, were three or four, um, but we hosted, so you could, they're wrestling at home. Uh, this, this really amazed me. Uh, I said, "Let me open up the first hour of PD for any student." Now, you remember, we're closed. We were closed, um, last Friday. Students didn't have to come in, they had the day off. Sixty students came in at eight o'clock to say, "I want to be trained." We're up to over a hundred and twenty students and over a hundred faculty. Uh, we're still making a pledge to get anyone that wants to train. We also are gonna keep pushing, uh, first aid, CPR, AED as well. It's a life skill. These are all life skills for all our students. We want to offer it to as many students as we can. And the, and the, the, the people that we partnered with to supply our boxes said, "As many times as you need us to come back, we will train." Um, so, that, that was amazing, uh, that they came in. Our dance team, led by Ms. Carr, uh, which is fairly new, uh, finished first place, uh, recently, and they have another, um, competition coming up. But if you see in the different dances, so Jazz, uh, received a high score of high gold. Uh, Contemporary received a score of gold. Um, Hip-Hop placed first overall, and Jazz, third overall. Um, and a lot of ti- a lot of this was their first time they were entered into a dance competition. Um, and then the, the second and final competition, so that's, I mean, amazing that this year she was able to bring the girls to two competitions, um, you know, is, uh, uh, coming up. So, uh, Sunday, this Sunday. So, we, I wish them the best. Uh, our girls wrestler, also wrestlers, also did amazing in the counties. And as you see there, we had three, uh, that placed in the counties. So, girl wrest- girls wrestling is, is, um, just taking off, and we have some amazing athletes with us, uh, here at Union. Um, just like flag football is coming as well. So, uh, Dr. Prez, do you want to just highlight some of the, uh, things, uh, as we m- mentioned last month? Uh, this month is Black History Month. If you want to just, uh, mention some of the activities, we had a lot that go- went on. This will be posted on the district website if anyone wants to click on any of the links. Um, but I'll just switch through them while you're talking.
So, uh, we have, we have a number of activities that are happening district by our schools, from analyzing and reading poems to doing read alouds from pre-K all the way up to grade twelve. We also have our students, uh, reading about poets, artists, activists. Uh, one of the interesting activities that came across was this periodic table of Black History Month, and if we can get a glimpse of it, but it's definitely is going to be shared on the, um, website. And it pretty much just categorizes, um, and, and it's color-coded, uh, the number of activists, artists, actors, et cetera, that we have. And it's just a, a very creative and intriguing way of representing our African Americans, our Black Americans in the United States and what they've contributed, not just socially, but also even in fashion. So, just a number of things that have been, uh, done in our schools, and I'm very pleased to see that our, our, our teachers are being very creative in what they're doing with our students in the classes.
Thank you, Dr. Prez. And as you see, there's three slides, very small print, of a lot of different activities. Uh, and again, this is, uh, some of the activities going on. Our teachers really do an amazing job, uh, with our students. Um, harassment, intimidation, bullying, I have to affirm, uh, two founded. This is from the period of January twenty-fourth to February thirteenth. Two founded, zero unfounded, zero inconclusive. There's the locations of the two founded. And then for the period of February thirteenth to February twentieth, uh, what was reported, which will, we will affirm next, uh, meeting, seven were founded, zero unfounded, one inconclusive. And there are the locations of where they were founded in inconclusive. And just to look forward, we, um, we sent out, we'll, we'll be able to announce it in a month or so, uh, based on the, the voting, um, our Teacher of the Year. Uh, that's always exciting, and, um, you know, we also do ESP of the Year. Uh, Ms. Shannon, um, you will have that probably April, May? Okay. Um, and then, uh, this past Friday, February sixteenth, the Township of Union Board members, uh, Office, Central Office Leadership, Principals, Supervisors, Leadership, UTA, Leadership, uh, embarked on professional development and labor management collaboration. As a collaborative unit, we, uh, we will take part in continuing this journey on March fourth. There is a resolution on tonight, so I'm very excited to have that approved so we could continue with this professional development, learning. And, uh, just so if anyone wants to look it up, this is a, a, a labor management collaboration amongst all the big associations in New Jersey. So, you have the superintendents, you have the school business administrators, uh, the, uh, administrators, uh, supervisors, as well as, um, the NJEA, and, um, I think I got all of them, PSA. So, it, it's all the associations working together to, um, have this, uh, format of collaboration, labor management format. And, and so many districts that are taking part in it have seen such an improvement, uh, in their school climate and how decisions are made. So, I'm looking forward to, to continuing that journey with all of, uh, the entities involved. And then just a, a heads up, uh, any of the Tufts parents, students in grades three to twelve, there's an info, uh, session coming up. Uh, it's free online tutoring service. It used to be called TutorMe, now it's PairDeck. Um, and it's February twenty-second at six o'clock, and that information will be online. If you have any questions, the, also, the coordinators of that are, are listed, Ms. Bream and Ms. Stabler. You could reach out and ask any questions on that. But, uh, that is another great thing we brought in, uh, with, uh, grant funds to offer, uh, one-on-one tutoring for any of our kids, uh, that need it. So, next, I'll pass it off while I put up the presentation to Gia Patel to just share some of the great things going on in January and February, correct?
Dr. B, did we have a date for the wrestling thing that we're hor- that we're hosting?
It's Friday and Saturday?
It's Friday and Saturday.
This Friday, Saturday?
Friday, Saturday, boys, Sunday, April.
Hello. So, this is the slideshow I've, um, composed for January through February highlights. But first, I just wanted to say, um, great job to Cosmetology and all that you're doing. I saw that you guys were having the, that you guys were having the free blowouts for the week of Valentine's Day, and I thought that was adorable. And Dr. Benacquista, I really enjoyed your slideshow. Daniel Collin and Bianca Cordova on the dance team were two of my bestest friends, so it was really nice seeing them up there. So, first, for the, um, extracurricular curriculums and like incentives in the school is Stop the Bleed. It's a vital campaign urging bystanders to be prepared to assist in a bleeding emergency. In the program, you'll acquire three essential techniques to potentially save a life, um, and you address severe bleeding before professional assistance arrives and is needed. So, there's just a few photos of Union High School's athletes from soccer, volleyball, taking part in this initiative. Next is School Counseling Week. This year's National School Counseling Week's theme was, um, standards-based and student-focused. School counselors spent the week advocating for their department. This included morning announcements, um, talking about the school counseling profession and services they provide. And they also set up information tables during lunches and had students input to help, sorry, and took students' input to help build a new bulletin board outside of the counseling office. So, those are the photos. Very pretty. Um, next is the Roots Black Excellence Club. They've been doing daily morning announcements highlighting influential African figures for Black History Month. And now on to sports and, um, accolades. So, for girls' wrestling, this past week was the first Union County Girls Wrestling Tournament held in Scotch Plains. Christine Pierre-Louis and Alisa Ellander both won the county championship in their respective weight class. Nisa Philias, my fellow liaison, um, finished third in the county. This Sunday is the North Two Girls Region Wrestling Tournament at Union High. Um, Alyssa is the number one seed at two hundred and thirty-five pounds, and Christine is the second seed at one hundred and eighty-five pounds. And there's the photos of them. Boys' wrestling. This past weekend, the boys competed in the New Jersey State District Thirteen Tournament held at Milburn High School. I went. Dan Collin finished second. Gabe Hargrove and Nick Bertolodi finished third, and they all qualify for the New Jersey State Region Four Tournament being held here this weekend. Girls' basketball. The girls' basketball team will play in the NJSIAA State Tournament this Wednesday at five PM at Plainfield High School. For track, um, Michaela Portuno won the Girls North Two Group Four State Championship in the fifty-five meter. Baba Allo earned second place in the Boys North Two Group Four in shot putt. That's all. Thank you.
And Madam President, that concludes my report for this month. Thank you.
Next, we will have the Education Student Discipline Committee Chair, Mr. Kohan, to present the resolutions to be voted on tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, before I move the action items, I'd like to acknowledge that Resolution E1 was approved at our work session last week. And, uh, Resolution E1 dash one, one A, uh, does not require action. It's for reporting purposes only. And Resolution E8 has been tabled for further work on the report. So, um, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Education Student Discipline Committee presents the following resolutions for the Board's consideration. I move the adoption of Resolutions E11 through E10 with the notations that I mentioned previously.
So, we're adding it now?
Yes. Read it in. Do you, I don't have it.
Do we have it to read it?
So, it'll be just, what are the students' initials?
Well, I, the student one we did-
Student ID number?
So, the one, the one I would like to make a recommendation to continue the long-term-
Yes.
Long-term suspension of, for student ID number two-six-eight-one-one-nine?
That's, that's sufficient.
That's one.
I, I have that for him.
Okay. Then the other one is a motion to overturn the administration's, uh, determination on HIV regarding student number or initials. Or JM.
BH number two.
It's, um- It's, it's Battle Hill Head number two.
Okay, so, head number two. So, basically, the, uh, resolution of the Board is to overturn the administration, administrative determination of a sustaining a charge of HIV regarding student number two at Battle Hill.
So, I'd like to add those two resolutions to the list, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Do I have a second? Thank you. So, this has been properly moved by, uh, Mr. Kohan and seconded by Ms. Kimberly Scott Hayden. Um, Ms. Capiolo, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell.
Yes.
Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
Mrs. Kante Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Abstain from the, um, two additional and yes to everything else.
And Ms. Santana.
Yes.
We moved everything, correct? Move on.
Next, we will have the Fiscal and Planning Committee Chair, Mrs. Carbonell, to present the resolutions to be voted on tonight.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to make a note, the Resolution F13 approved the increase to the purchase order. Our House will be tabled until we have an opportunity to discuss it a little further. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Fiscal and Planning Committee presents the following resolutions for the Board's consideration. With that exception, I am going to call this as a block. F1 through F17.
Any discussion?
Madam President, uh, there was some discussion about tabling, uh, F13?
Yeah, that's what I just said.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, it's okay.
Thank you.
It's been a long night.
Yes. Any other discussion? Are we good? Great. So, this motion has been properly moved by Mrs. Carbonell and seconded by Ms. Kim Scott Hayden. Can I have a roll call, please, Mrs. Capiolo?
Uh, Ms. Carbonell.
Yes.
Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
Mrs. Kante Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Santana. Ms. Santana.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Grievance Negotiations Committee presents the following resolutions for the Board's consideration. Approve Sidebar Agreement, UTEA.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? This motion has properly been moved by Chastity Santana and seconded by, uh, Mr. Kohan. Can I have a roll call, please, Mrs. Capiolo?
Yes. Ms. Carbonell.
Yes.
Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
Mrs. Kante Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden.
Oh, I'm abstaining.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Santana.
Yes. Next, we will have the Operations Committee, Ms. Scott Hayden, to present the resolutions to be voted on tonight.
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Operation Committee presents the following resolution for the Board's consideration, and I'm moving them in blocks since there's only two. O1, approve security bus curial evacuation reports, and O2, approve the request from the Township of Union, Chamber of Commerce to u- to utilize the UHS facility.
Second.
Is there a second? Excellent. Any discussion? The motion has been properly moved by Ms. Scott Hayden and seconded by Ms. Williams. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiolo?
Ms. Carbonell.
Yes.
Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
Mrs. Kante Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Santana.
Yes. Next, we will have the Personnel Committee member, Ms. Kante Mackey, to present the following resolutions.
Personnel? Oh. I'm sorry. Um, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Personnel Committee presents the following resolutions for the Board's consideration. P1A through P111.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam President, I'd like to move a, an amendment to P3A and ask that we, in the future, accept letters of resignation, retirement with regrets. I'll let that move before I make any comment.
Yes.
Are you amending the current?
Not-
Yes. I just want to add the words "with regret." Is there anything inappropriate about that?
It may be with applause sometimes, but-
People resign. Retire. People resign, retire with regret.
Moving forward or?
Moving forward.
Yes, yes. To make life easier. Yes, 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 yes.
I, I apologize for not offering that last week.
No, no, moving forward, we can uh, we can definitely do that. That'd be great. So, and we, we said there was, I forgot who the second was? Me. A second, okay, great. So the discussion is that we will add that moving forward.
Yes, and I'd just like to point out that, you know, every one of these people who are uh leaving for retirement purposes have served the district long and well. I know several of the people on this list personally. And uh the public will note, there are three social studies teachers leaving Union High School. It's going to leave a big gap, a big hole. Uh each of these folks have, have served with distinction. And Mr. Zezer, who's the head custodian of Battle Hill, has also had a long and successful career in the district. Uh and I think that it's appropriate that we make sure that we acknowledge, that we uh really honor and, and uh appreciate the long service.
Acknowledge, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mr. Cohen.
And, and we are, just so everyone is aware, um organizing a, we invite them to a lunch towards the end of the year and recognize them at all our retirements uh at one meeting at the end of the year.
Wonderful. Any other discussion? So this motion has been properly moved by Ms. Conte Mackey and sc- seconded by Mr. Cohen. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiolo?
Ms. Carbonell.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Santana.
Yes, thank you so much. Next, we will have the Pol- Policy Committee Chair, Ms. Williams, to present the resolutions to be voted on tonight.
Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Policy Committee presents the following policies for the Board's consideration. This is the final reading adoption. Policy Item One, approve Policy Twenty-two-seventy, Religion in Schools. Policy Two, approve Policy Item Two, correction. Approve Policy Thirty-one-sixty-one, Examination for Cause. Policy Item Three, approve Policy Thirty-two-twelve, Attendance. Policy Item Four, approve Regulation Three-two-one-two, Attendance. Policy Item Five, approve Policy Three-three-two-four, Right of Privacy. Policy Item Six, approve Policy Four-one-six-one, Examination for Cause. Policy Item Seven, approve Policy Four-two-one-two, Attendance. Policy Item Eight, approve Regulation Four-two-one-two, Attendance. Policy Nine, approve Policy Four-three-two-four, Right of Privacy. Policy Item Ten, approve Policy Five-one-six, Five-one-one-six, Education of Homeless Children and Youths. And Policy Item Eleven, approve Regulation Five-one-one-six, Education of Homeless Children and Youths. And our last is Policy Item Twelve, approve Policy Eight-five-hundred, Food Services.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? This motion has been properly moved by Ms. Williams and seconded by Ms. Carbonell. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiolo?
Ms. Carbonell.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Santana.
Yes, thank you so much. So uh the committee chair, moving along, we will have Ms. Scott Hayden that will present the following residency resolutions.
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Residency Committee presents the following resolution for the Board's consideration, which is R. One, Report of Students Voluntarily Transferred to District of Residence. Um is noted in the agenda, um student ID number and school location for informational purposes only.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I just want to make a note, this is one of the largest lists that we've approved in this past year. And um as we consider the services and the different resources we provide for the district as well as the budget, this is so important and we ca- we cannot underscore it enough. So thank you to all those involved, Dr. Benacosta, in making sure that the services that we have go to our Union Township students. So thank you.
And we did have two more that we had a hearing set up for but decided to transfer out.
Good.
And I, and I would just like to, as a um individual servant on that committee, I would just like to also note and say thank you to the um actual investigators. Because I'm going to tell you, they do a thorough, thorough job. So thank you to them. They give up countless hours of their time, early in the morning, in the evening. I know they collect the salary, but when I tell you that the reports are extensive, um basically, by the time we get to the stage of a hearing, you really can't even refute the information that is before you because it is really just that thorough. So I wanted to just say thank you to them because, and make sure that it's noted that we do appreciate all their efforts. And Dr. B., thank you as well.
Absolutely. Uh Madam President.
Yes.
Just a question, uh I'm, uh, do we have a running total of the number of students that have been exited this year? I think we used to, used to be there someplace.
What's it? It usually is on the uh agenda and?
That's why.
No, no. It'll be good to know. Next meeting.
Updated on that next, next month.
Thank you, Doctor.
Great question.
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes.
What is the estimated amount that we're saving of these kids taking off of the role?
Well, on average, and a pupil's education is about, what, sixteen thousand per year?
Per child?
Per child.
Yeah, I think our average cost is around fourteen and change, fifteen thousand. And then depending on if it's a child with additional services, it could end up, you know, if they get transportation or if they're at a district.
It's kind of awkward.
You know, so it could be a lot more.
And do we request that money back?
Um at times, through legal, we have uh, we, we have someone right now that was ordered to, to reimburse. Um but normally with stuff like that, it's through our, our attorney.
Okay.
And um many times when cases get challenged to the commissioner, uh it'll be a ruling.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Great. So this motion has been properly moved by Ms. Scott Hayden and seconded by Ms. Carbonell. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiolo?
Point of order. Point of order, Madam President. There is no vote required.
Oh, they're great, wonderful. Even better for us. So uh, so Technology Committee, so this, there are no technology resolutions to present, but I know that uh Mr. McDowell always kind of likes to give us an update on, on things going on in technology.
And I have to apologize, I, I
Oh, I'm sorry.
I sent the notes to Mrs. uh Paul just to review because it was actually her agenda for my reading. And I promised last week to send them to Mrs. Capiolo and I did not do that this evening though.
No worries, no worries. I just, I didn't want to omit you. I know you always like to, to let us know what's going on with technology. Excellent. Moving right along, may I have a motion to approve the Bill's list?
So, so moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? This motion has been properly moved by Mr. Cohen and seconded by uh Ms. Scott Hayden. Can I have a roll call, please, Ms. Capiolo?
Ms. Carbonell.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden. Mrs. Williams.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Santana.
Yes. And I'm moving on to unfinished business. Yes, Ms. Williams.
I just wanted to um say that Ms. Royster didn't really explain just how intense the state board is. Um I've been on both sides. I've been a model for a cosmetologist and I've taken the state board because I am a licensed esthetician. Um and what happens is, these young ladies and young men are in a big room. And there are people that are watching them do their work. And one group of students is taking the practical while the other group of students is doing the written part of the test. And is it two hours?
No, so uh now, nowadays.
Uh, uh, now she just aged me. Because when I took it, yeah. Yeah.
She looks like she's thirty.
Is they take the written test at onsite examination centers such as Prometric.
Yeah, we.
Which they go to far. So that test is two hours long. And then once they pass the written test, then they're invited to go take their practical.
So they don't do it the same time anymore. Yeah, but two hours and three. Yeah, back in the day, right? So it's, it's really a very intense um test to take. Um and just to have somebody watching over you while you do it. And I do remember when I was taking the test, the, the people that watch you, the proctors, they don't play because one of the girls dropped her brush. And she thought she didn't see her. She picked it up and the woman came over and she's like, you can pack your stuff up now.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so it is really, really, these kids have to be on point. And um y'all know I'm a chatty Patty, right? So when, when I was the model, I kept wanting to ask her stuff. She's like, you are going to get me kicked out of here. Shut up. So it's, it's really that serious for them in terms of being quiet, in terms of being on point, in terms of sanitation. Um and then once they get that license, you know, then they're in the salon, they have their permit. That still goes, right? They still get the permit and they can work.
Their permit in between their junior and their senior years. Um because it's a one-thousand-hour program, so at the five-hundred-hour mark, they're then eligible.
To start going. Yeah, so I'm really, really just so incredibly proud of our students and the work that you're doing with them because they have unbelievable futures. Um the person that I modeled for, um she owns a spa now. She's got three facial rooms. Um she's got six chairs. And she was one of the first African-American women in Bloomfield to open up a salon. So our kids have tremendous, tremendous potential, you know. So I just wanted to put that out there and let people know just how hard our kids work and.
Thank you so much.
If I may, I just want to also add to that, uh my son is in your class.
Oh.
He's, uh, and it kind of surprised me when he wanted to do that a couple, I guess, last year. But a couple of Christmases, Christmases ago, he wanted uh some clippers for Christmas. Fine, no problem. And uh so now he's cutting my hair what I have left.
There you go.
But, but, but he, uh, he cuts his, his teammates hair on the football team and uh I think his other brother has come there to have his hair done. And even the seniors over at the senior center where, where I, I hang out a lot, uh they're talking about uh the services that you provide there on Thursday. So uh as Mrs. Williams said, and I'm sure the rest of the board feels, please keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Um and I, I had the opportunity to ask Ms. Royster, is it? What the success rate was. And she can brag about this all day, every day. Ninety-eight percent of her students are doing so well. And I also appreciate what you said. What people don't realize is that in order to pass that test, it's not just the aesthetics of it, but it's also the anatomy and physiology. So you have to be good in biology. And there's a lot of chemistry involved. And as you mentioned, if you don't do well on the theory part of it, you're never going to go into that practical side of it. So congratulations to you, nice job.
And, and just correct me if I'm not wrong, not every cause teacher holds, uh has the requirements to teach the sciences behind it, but you do.
Yes.
So that's even.
Any other unfinished business?
I mean, I think if I update the public on the board, open board seat.
Yes, please. Thank you.
So as uh many have known, um the board did advertise um for resumes for people interested in the open board seat. That has been accomplished. Um now that process is closed, the board did receive resumes um with candidates that are interested. And I would just like to, as part of the process, update the public that um the next phase of it is interviews as well as a selection. Uh, you know, recommendation and, and a vote on the open board seat. Um so this board will be back to nine members. Um that is going to be a special meeting on March twelfth. Um they will have the interviews in executive session and at the end of that come in, uh make recommendations to be voted on. So that will then close out the process of the open board seat. So um part of it is making sure the public's aware of uh the process and that's what I wanted to do.
Thank you so much. If there's no other unfinished business, I move on to new business.
I just want to say one more time, I want to give a shout out to Melissa. It was a rough week, I believe it was last week. Everything is blending in, but um several of us went and enjoyed the pasta and meatball night at Battle Hill and, and we had a great time. So, thank you.
Any other new business? Going, going.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
The board will go into executive session to discuss personnel and legal issues and actions will be, may take place once we return. Once when we return, may I have a motion to move to go into executive session?
So moved.
And second, second. Thank you. Mrs. Capiolo, I have uh Ms. Scott Hayden that moved it and Mr. Cohen, which seconded, roll call, please. Yes, did I get that right?
No, I thought you stole mine.
Ms. Carbonell.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mrs. Conte Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden. Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Santana.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I was going to say, who?
These two left.
Which one?
McDowell and Santana.
No, we'll get them in the, you know, that. I am too.
You taking everything out?
We got to come back after to adjourn. And then we just need to chat.
Y'all hold on.
I don't know.
It's because you didn't say anything, that's why.
Oh, no. What are you leaving? Oh, my God. This is just like. But even like, even the logistics, like that's, that's worse. No, I'm reading the report and I'm like. Poor thing. It's not his fault. They paid him. I didn't get a survey either.
Good evening, good evening.
How are you?
How you doing? How's everything?
It's good. Good seeing you.
We seen you guys in operation tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Usually have a scheduling conflict.
Today was a good day.
This was a good evening.
Yay! Get you when we can.
Oh, yeah, without a doubt.
Girl, I'm sorry I missed it. I was stuck at work. I hate my job. I work all the way in White Plains, New York. Girl, I'm like, wanted to like jump out my skin. I was just like. I didn't even see your thing. I didn't even see it. No, I like legitimately didn't see it. I was just like, how to be? Yeah. I didn't get a survey. So that's my question, like Chastain get a survey. And we all have kids that are like in district, out of district. So now I'm like, it's.